When it comes to making plans, you are the best. What about those barbecues you plan in detail for your family? Or your daughter's first costume party? It was out of this world. The same way you plan each detail for those moments, start planning to protect you and your loved ones from a natural disaster. Sign up for local weather and emergency alerts. Prepare an emergency kit and make a family communications plan. Protecting your family is the best plan you can make.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's 6 o'clock on June 20th, and the regular meeting of the District 882 Monticello School Board is called to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... of the United States of America. Public which stands one nation under our in the fiscal...
I'd like the record to reflect that we do have a quorum of four here tonight. We are missing members Casey, Mark Branson, and Jamie Seaborn, who were unable to be with us. However, they have both seen the agenda, the items that are on there, and we've had communication with them. So as our first item, number three, we'd like to approve the agenda for this evening. Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 4-0. We have no citizens' comments that I'm aware of tonight, Clay? None? Moving on to number five, fiscal stability. We have a consent agenda tonight that includes approval of the minutes from June 5th. It also includes personnel matters and our regular monthly bills. Members received all this information in their packets already. We've had discussion about making sure everything was on there. I think there was one small change that we made to the personnel graph. The title of two columns was accidentally transposed, and we did fix that, I believe, before the meeting this evening. So that was the only change that was on there. So do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
So moved by Melissa Curtis to accept the consent agenda, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 4-0. Moving on to collaborative connections, we have some donations and gifts this time, and Superintendent Olson is going to talk about those.
All right, we have four here today. Like always, I've done some amazing things for us, including Electric. Heard about lunch balances, and they specifically want to pay tribute to our seniors. And they called the district, or the district office, worked with the district office, and zeroed out the lunch balances for all seniors, and that came to an amount of $1,337. So obviously, a huge thanks to LeBron. And then the NEA Foundation, $4,492 in order for a student success grant that will help pay for equipment needed for new visual arts courses in our Monticello High School program. So both of those coming forward here tonight.
And we have a resolution for that?
Therefore be resolved by the Monticello School Board, number 882, to gratefully accept the fund donations. LeBron, Electric, $1,337 to help pay lunch accounts for seniors, and the NEA Foundation for $4,492 to help with student success grant and help pay for equipment needed for new visual arts courses at MHS.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Melissa Curtis. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 4-0 for gratefully accepting the solution for the donation for our district. Moving on to our school start time presentation, we are very well aware as a board that this is a high interest across the district. We've all received communication from families and teachers regarding this, and we're going to have an update on that process this evening by Superintendent Olson and Director of Communications, Clay Swatzky.
Right, so tonight is a day where we get to just make sure that, my word? That we have given this the time that it deserves. It's been going on for a whole year now, as far as research with a committee. So we are going to be discussing and sharing information about changing the school start times in the Monticello District to better meet the needs of our learning community. So just a little bit of research, many of us who have been here for a few years know that about 10 years ago, this was brought forth. And when it got brought forth that time, it really was all about just flipping the times. And the flip times would have our secondary then going around the 9:00 hour. And while that might be good for sleep, it really wasn't what the community wanted for their older students. They didn't want them not to have the opportunities for sports or the opportunities going to well late into the night, and/or work would then be not as viable as an option. So really, we listened to the community back then, dialed back, but really, that the voices of our educators, our teachers, the voices of our medical professionals, and the voices of many parents wanting for us to take a look at this never really ceased. It's come up for all of us who have been in administration for long times in this district as, you know, to keep looking at this, to try better our times. This year, a task force was commissioned to once again research the improved start times for elementary and secondary students. Next slide, please. And I'd really just like to pause here and just like be able to share a little bit about the task force. The task force was really built with mostly naysayers. So it was people who didn't want this. I knew that that would be a good way to engage people who at the coffee chat were pretty vocal. And we've had, we had two school board members on that committee, and we spent at least six whole group sessions, and then we also had several small group sessions where we dove into other types of research. And I do believe this, that there wouldn't be one person, a part of that group of the 20 people, who would walk away saying that they weren't heard, they weren't listened to, and they weren't able to guide the research. Through the first, about three to four, I rarely talked. It really was about facilitating a meeting and listening to people's voices. And through that, through that time together, I feel like we were able to pull in some instructional leaders in our district, listen to instructional leaders. We were able to really spend a lot of time with Hoagland Transportation, and we were able to listen to our medical professionals. We brought in elementary folks to hear their lens of what it's been like, starting at 9:00, knowing that students were arriving for daycare at 6:00 in the morning. And then we brought in secondary students and talked about their schedule and what that felt like, and a lot of the, some of the research led us to some byproduct research. And so length of day became a concern that we did a little research in and looked at some research of schools and secondary and elementary across our area, across the state, across the nation. And so I just like to really, you know, like give tribute to a group of 20 people who came together and really did a lot of great discussion, answer, research together. And if you really think about education, I would really hope that we'd have that opportunity to do things like this more often with families, so that we can hear concerns and, but then dig into them deeply. And that's not to say, you know, in July, with whatever happens, if there are people that still have challenges, I mean, if that's, if you voted yes, then that would be something that we would dig into, and we'll get more into that in a little bit. But next slide, please. Just simply, our common goal was to find the best possible and practical school start and end times for students in the Monticello School District. While making decisions for students, we really wanted to keep the diverse needs of our families front and center. And next slide.
So obviously, with a project like this, the first priority, and really one of the biggest priorities throughout, was information gathering. And there was a focus from the task force, and even prior to the initiation of the task force, to focus both on analytical data and also anecdotal data, which really started with conversations, as Superintendent Olson mentioned, at coffee chat, going back to last summer, which then transformed into the formation of the task force early last school year. And it continued through listening sessions with small groups, with individuals, with a lot of conversations with people who had questions, concerns, and just general outreach, trying to, trying to listen in order to better prepare for the possibilities ahead of us. We also spent a lot of time with health research, and we'll get to resources at the end of this presentation, but both through, again, the evidence-based research, but also listening to some of our local health experts and bringing them in to work with the committee, as well as bringing them in directly to speak with administration and try to continue to gain a better understanding of what best practices are available for our children as we move forward here. And then, last but certainly not least, the amount of time we spent working with Hoagland Transportation to figure out what exactly was possible as we're looking at changing our start times, what goals they could help us meet. And I want to just take a second to, you know, appreciate how the work that they have put into this process, they've really dug in. And I think they opened up some doors that we maybe weren't even sure were possible with their willingness to, to work together and create some of these plans with us. So the, as the task force worked through all of the possibilities, right, it's kind of, you start with an endless amount of possibilities when you're looking at a school day, and they worked through a number of relevant options and were able to narrow it down to a consensus two best options. The, at the end of the day, they felt like these were the two options that would best meet the needs of all of our kids, while also being feasible for our community and our staff and everything, everyone, every other stakeholder in the district. The, the option that ended up as the runner-up option with the task force, so the option that was not chosen, is the option you see on your screen here, which would not have flipped our schedule. It would have kept our high school, our secondary students early, however, it would have shortened their day. One thing that we confirmed through this process is that at this moment, our secondary day is one of the longest secondary days that you'll find in the state. And so there was this option, which would have shortened that day, and therefore have, we would have been able to, that, that would have allowed freedom of transportation time to kind of crunch all the days together a little bit and just try to give a little more rest to our secondary students, which was, of course, one of the early goals when, whenever you look into this project. It would have, one of the, one of the benefits, one of the pros, one of the things people liked about this option is it would have worked with our current calendar, and it would not have created a lot of change, which the, the second option, the option that the task force is recommending for the 2024, 2025 school year and beyond, will create a, a small amount of calendar change. As you can see here, the, the task force recommendation is for a flipped start time. However, it's, it's a really minimal difference. We have our earliest starters at the elementary school, starting at 7:50 in the morning, and our latest starters at the secondary, starting at 8:15 in the morning. One of the things that you'll notice on the right, that's the difference of how long the days are compared to our current schedule. All of those days would be shorter with this new schedule than they are now. So our high school days would be 24 minutes shorter, our kindergarten days would be five minutes shorter, and everything else kind of falls in between that. As you can also see, the elementary schools get out at 2:20 on this current schedule, with our secondary schools getting out at 2:50 and 2:55. Some of the important components of that plan, when you're looking at those times, is that, one of the big benefits is it aligns us a lot better with the schools that we are partnered with in the co-op, Becker and Big Lake, which is really beneficial when it comes to transportation of some of our students that are in special education. It also opens the door for a lot more collaboration in the future, in the future, as we move forward, working with the districts around us. Another big component of this, and a real priority of the task force, was that it's not strictly a flip schedule. We didn't want to move elementary students to the time that secondary students are at now, and then move secondary students to that time, because it's kind of just solving one problem and creating another. So that was a huge part of working with Hoagland, was to find how can we actually make this the best for all of our students, and I think that that's what you see with the schedule that we're proposing tonight. At this moment, with our current schedule, there's an hour and 25 minutes between secondary and elementary start times. And with improving our transportation process and making the changes that we're looking at, we're able to cut that all the way down to 25 minutes between start times that we feel are both reasonable and fit in line with what you see at a lot of schools, both around the area and around the state. Some of the other important components, as I mentioned, this proposed calendar, this proposed schedule would create a little bit of a calendar change, because we are lessening the minutes in our day, especially at the secondary level. We would need to add a few calendar days for the 24, 25 school year and beyond, but that is something, as the board knows, that we've been kind of moving toward anyways. We've been toward the state minimum in calendar days, and we've been moving up, trying to find that balance. So this would just increase that process a little bit. We would also look at taking away early release days, which generally speaking, is a, is a move that a lot of our staff and families, I think, have supported for a while, because it's a tough day to get much done, and it's a tough day for families to provide transportation and/or care for their kids on the remainder of the day. So one of the big, one of the big things that comes with this plan is the hybrid busing concept. And this isn't something that would impact all of our students. It would impact a select number of students, specifically those that live in further away areas of our school community, as you can see up there. Clearwater, Big Lake, Maple Lake, Otsego, and Hasty Staffs are the most likely to be impacted by this. What would happen is their students in K through 12 would ride the bus at the same time. There'd be one pickup in the morning and one drop off in the afternoon, and then they would just be dropped off at one school first, then the other schools. This would potentially create a slightly longer bus ride for some of those students, but Hoagland has assured us that they are right now working through all of the scenarios, and they're, they're doing everything they can to make it a basically minimal, if no impact, situation for those students. And then students that are within kind of the city proper are unlikely to be impacted at all by, by that change. The goal that the district has given Hoagland Transportation, and they understand well and are going, going full after, is that no students are on the bus for more than one hour at any given time. The, the last, the big thing is that the schedule change is currently slated to be cost neutral. Obviously, that was another important thing for the task force, and we know for the board as well, that budget is always in mind when we're looking at making any changes. One of the things that we will have to consider as we move forward is there is the potential that there will be a need for additional special trans vehicles to cover the smaller gap between schools, but we're still looking into that. That's just one cost item that is kind of floating out there. But the, the goal is for it to be a cost neutral schedule change for the district.
As I transition, I'm just going to just, one more piece on that hybrid. I mean, if, without that hybrid transportation, we would not be looking at the times that we are looking at right now. And I think looking at a 25-minute gap in between schools is almost inconceivable in this district, because we're used to that hour 25, because that's what we've been told that, that's the turnaround time needed. And so just a huge shout out to Hoagland Transportation for their ways of creatively looking at transportation, researching what some other school districts our size are doing, and almost making a single-tier busing right now. I looked at single-tier busing across the state, and a lot of those have about a 15, 20-minute gap, and ours is 25. So that creative hybrid busing is really allowing us and affording us to get at what almost everybody has always asked for in this community, and that's single-tier busing, to start our kids as more, as, as more unified as, as we, as we can. And I know before we came here tonight, we did sit with the admin just to make sure that this is something that they still wanted to pursue, because they were, there were a couple of admin as part of the committee, but they had not been part of some of the full discussions and research. And this is something that we all have wanted for many years, to try right-size some of the transportation and try to get us more unified. There's a lot of advantages that come, including through the lens of our people, some of these things that the committee has noted, but the committee really wanted to emphasize that it provides more sleep to secondary students and better driving conditions, more light for our youngest drivers, that it shortens right now the Monticello High School schedule, so admin did have to look at that, and they've been operating on a seven-period day. We would have to reduce that to a six-period day, and they've already started looking at that for a year away. And as we've heard many of our students talk over the years, is that seven periods is just a lot of, a lot of school. You know, most schools have looked at some type of block scheduling or a six-period day to try and make sure that relationships are still the number-one piece of our school district. So we think some of the byproducts of this schedule will help us accomplish many great things, including better overall mental health and physical health. Shorter district day creates additional whole-family time, but I just want to make sure I say this, but this one was not felt by some of the community members. So there are a few caveats that I'm just going to dive in, you know, just to make sure that you're aware of. While we left the meeting with a vote, a positive vote for the schedule that we proposed, it was a very close, close vote inside that committee work. Overlap of staff building hours is another unification piece that we haven't had in this district, but allowing our secondary and elementary very similar times, so it would allow for some professional development, consistent professional development across the district, which would really help all of our, our schools, we believe. Shorter school days with slightly more days in school should create better learning. You know, short, short bursts of education, if we look at our instructional model in our school that we're all striving for, we, we, we are aiming for a short burst of instruction and not long periods of time where students are unengaged. We want them to be engaged. We believe that this best meets the needs of secondary and elementary without hurting the others. So biologically, if you look at, most of the research would say that as students get into their teens, there's a need for increased sleep, but they're not getting it. And so if there's anything that we can do as a school district to try help promote that, we'd, would, I would love to be part of that. I know former Superintendent Dr. Johnson said that it would be one of his regrets, that they wasn't able to get the times changed. And I'm going to stop using the word flip, because flip was kind of the old way of looking at things, which really had an hour, 25 minutes gap. And we are really looking at condensing them to more of a unified schedule. And then the last one is that opens up coaching opportunities for elementary staff. And just like along the lines of coaching, you know, people say, well, this will just create more of an opportunity for coaches to play sports in the morning. Well, I have to tell you, they are now. And so there are many sports that are playing in the morning now, and we start at 7:25. So that's, we have, we have tardy concerns at both the middle school and, and, and high school, because sports are practicing that early. So this would just hopefully help our attendance, which is also a thing that has been identified by the school board as an area that we should be looking into. Next slide, please. That doesn't mean that our work would be over. So this is that period of time where you get to think from now until that July 17th board date, when we come together to, to vote on this. And you will get emails from people, because any change is hard for families. That's why we have done what we've done. We've spent time with the task force, and we're also giving families a year to, to let us hear their voices and share their concerns with us, so that we can better meet those concerns over the course of the year. So whether it's a daycare concern, or whether it's just not working in their family's work schedule, and lack of daycare, or the elementary families may say that we don't have as much family time now, because, you know, the, maybe one of the spouses works later into the evening, and they have to go to bed. So these are the things, challenges we are going to hear. But mathematically, if you look at condensing a schedule, which we are doing, and we're getting it down to 25 minutes, we have more of an opportunity potentially for families once they get those things figured out, and once we can help them figure out their works, you know, their, their schedules. We should have better opportunities for family time. Some of the other concerns besides daycare would be, you know, we've already started to problem-solve, like how can we better use our youth service to provide service for our families and potential daycare staff? I know that Magic Adventures already hires a lot of our young people, and they do a great job, so looking at that potentially, can it be part of a class? You know, we have the education class. There are a lot of things that we're already talking about, and we have a year to plan for. And then we also want to look at the hybrid busing. And so we, you know, as an elementary principal, I know that we had, we had bus monitors. And bus monitors were fifth graders, you know, working with the younger students. But really, on those hybrid bus opportunities, you know, you could really have students that we see that are true, you know, leaders, and they could be fifth graders, they could be sixth graders, could be seventh graders, but it's a real opportunity for them to get trained. We partner with American Legion. We can, we can add some different training modules for our bus monitors, and it would give you a, a bigger range of, of age students to be bus monitors and to help those buses. Right now, our, if you look at the data, our kindergarten students' buses would have the most infractions, discipline needed would be the younger students. So it's usually not your high school and middle school students. They're usually a little sleepy in the mornings and just want to get off in the afternoons. But that's not to say that we don't have those challenges. Those are some of the things that hybrid busing is going to, it's going to present us, and we will have to have plans for, and, and, yeah. And then the, the one that I often have, have heard the most is elementary-age students will be at bus stops earlier than in previous years. And I know a lot of us that have maybe come from other districts, we have maybe ran different schedules, so you understand that once it becomes, after you get through helping families and problem-solve their, their challenges in the morning, it just becomes more of the culture, and we just haven't had that culture, because there are many schools that, elementary schools start anywhere from 7:25 to, to the, to the 9:00, like we have been. from 7:25 to the nine o'clock like we have been starting. And so, it's really trying to meet their biological clock a little bit better and hopes that our elementary teachers don't see the waiting effects of going into that 3:40, 3:45 hour that we've been going into, trying to get them in when they're the most alert, and then making sure that we have plans for all those types of potential community concerns. Over the next year, one of the things that we will commit to is just really preparing town hall meetings, more listening, what are their challenges, and then making sure that we have FAQ sheets. We're working on a, as soon as that July 17th meeting would come, if it becomes part of our landscape that we need to start planning to move forward, you know, we're gonna make a video. We've got the script if that is the case. We're planning, so we're not just sitting here idle. We're making sure that we have plans for either. And making, and those are the types of things that we'll do to make sure that family feel, still feels engaged and taken care of. I had a few emails, as I'm sure you did, wondering about, is this the vote tonight? And just, you know, reassuring people that tonight is the night that we just get to present, ask questions, and then those questions, along with questions that we've been compiling through surveys and through informal meetings with parents for, for me, for 18 years, we will use those to create our FAQs. So... Just some of the research that we used. As we dove into this together, this is more the big research that we used. We also brought in a lot of, like I said, a lot of local people, doctors, some of our instructional leaders gave presentations, our teachers were a big part of it, and admin, and then the bus company has been a partner that has had a lot of, a lot of work throughout this process, a lot of questions to be answered. So, those are the surveys on the right that we used, along with a parent survey that started this whole process, and then a pretty vibrant coffee chat that also started this process. And that mapped, that coffee chat led us to those six sessions, and those six sessions led us to this presentation here tonight. So, now, we will just close with questions that you have as a school board.
One of the questions I have is the members of the, on the family time, that they didn't agree with the time. Was it they wanted the alternate time or no change, or what was, what were they after? Or was it too fragmented?
Yeah, no, it's...
Decisions.
Those families that shared that they are worried about that the students in elementary would have to go to bed earlier, and if us, if one of their family members, one of the parents, doesn't get home till later, that's last family time because the students have to now go to bed earlier. So, it's really about bedtime and maybe a person not getting home till about that bedtime.
Okay. And then, what is the earliest that an elementary, it'll be on the bus, that we know of today, if this change were to be approved?
Yeah, so you always just look at, well, this is new routing, so it's gonna be a little bit different. But, you know, we've always used an hour in this district before.
Okay, so if it, if it ends up, the route comes over an hour, will that be then presented, or would be told that before the July meeting?
Yeah. That's what we kept pushing in the community. Like, even to hear that a couple of them were at an hour five right now, like we, none of us really wanted to hear. We wanna get better. We need to get better, I believe, as a district. If we're saying 50 to 60 minutes, then we need to make sure that we have 50 to 60-minute routes. So...
There's quite a lot of discussion about the younger kids, and of course, bathroom issues and things like that being on a bus for an extended period of time. And we were very grateful to hear that the kindergarten staff and the ECU staff are really sensitive to that, and they make sure the kids are in the best possible situation to get on the longer bus rides. But that was definitely part of the discussion.
Yeah, I haven't made it through all the resources yet, so I still have to read the bottom half. That was my question on there.
Superintendent Olson, would you share with us what, I know there was a survey sent out to students at the high school, and some of them, of course, were seniors that were graduating. Can you give us the gist of what the students felt that were questioned about their preferences?
Yeah. I think if I would do the survey again, I would know to try to lay out a schedule so they could see, not only would they, I think when we asked them what they thought about starting later, it wasn't as pronounced as I thought it would be. I thought the students would be very much in favor. Because informally, when I would ask them that at doors and things like that, you almost always heard, "Oh, this is early. We'd rather, we'd like to sleep in." But now, when it became just part of a survey, I think they started thinking two steps ahead, and they were worried about their nighttime activities, thinking that if you just transfer a seven-hour day and you start later, they were worried about what their evenings were gonna look like. I would say that was particularly true with a lot of the students who are high flyers. So, lots of honors courses or college, college courses, and then people who work, you know, taking away that opportunity. And so, we looked at that and heard that voice, and then really tried, look at the length of day as a potential byproduct of our changes here. And that byproduct was to shorten the day just a little bit, but making sure, I mean, it's gonna be a stretch. Elementary principals, middle school, high school, all principals are a little worried about shortening the day. There is no doubt. But we do believe that when you look at a student's day and just try relate it to an eight-hour workday that a lot of adults work, if you start with that six-and-a-half hours, and then you put maybe a half hour of daycare on each end, now you're at seven and a half. Now, those kids who do activities, now you got maybe an hour activity, maybe a half hour of drive time. Like, pretty soon, these kids are, they're doing things for eight-and-a-half hours, nine hours a day if it's travel to an external, off-site game. And we're, we're, these kids are busy. And like, as adults, I think it's our job to recognize that busy schedule, and what can we do as adults to help reduce some of that stress and anxiety? You hear about it, right, that the stress and anxiety of people, adults, kids, is real. And so, what can we do as a system to better navigate some of those stressors?
I have a question on slide nine, if you wanna bring that back up. The first bullet point, this will help with transportation of our students in special education, and will help with future collaboration efforts between all three districts. What are we missing out today on the collaboration side because of our current times versus Becker and Big Lake and others in the area?
So, this one, I know Melissa sits on the board of Wright Tech, and some of you have heard me talk about Wright Tech in a way that we love them, right? But I feel so bad for the directors to try, figure out how to run a collaborative school with eight different schools' schedules. Not one of us are the same. And yet, they have to get that square peg in that round hole, day in, day out, to deliver the education programs that we can't in our schools. And so, for me, like, as we start to look at smaller-scale collaboration that we have with the co-op, with, yeah, with our special ed co-op, and Jeff sits on that board, like, we're right. The three, the three school districts wanna collaborate. We wanna look at how can we, how can we build programs together? How can we build classes together? So, some of the collaboration that we, that I believe that we can do in the future would be to do some shared courses, some ITV. It might sound old-school a little bit, but we probably wouldn't have had to cut German, you know, some of our languages years ago if you do some of that shared things. So, I think it, just like the college opportunities, like, I think a true collaboration with high schools will lend itself to furthering the depth of classes that we can offer. So, that's the collaboration that I see in the future. I had conversations with the high school principals about this. I've brought this mindset to Wright Tech, and actually had a speaker come in from Grand Rapids, who they do a collaborative up there. That's a true collaborative. They went, wrote for a grant for $2 million, and they re-aligned all their schedules. And like, you do have to do some unique things, and it's hard. You can't just say, "We're gonna collaborate with Big Lake because if our credits and our things don't line up," nobody wants to do that. But if you plan for it in the future. So, this is just setting ourselves up. It's gonna, it would take years for that to come to fruition. So, I don't want that, you know, obviously, a buzz to get out there. It's just, it's setting your school district always up for the future so that you can be in as most successful position as possible. Efficiencies, effectiveness, yeah.
I just have some of the same concerns that were on the community concerns about the busing, and I know that'll get figured out. And daycare, since we're already full for daycare, like, just, and I know these are concerns that we said we'll have, you know, a year to figure out, but just that it's already full at Magic Adventures and those issues.
Those are real things, and they're like, so, those are the, some of the biggest challenges that we're gonna have. There's no doubt. I do know that as I walk through the high school and middle school in the morning, 7 o'clock, you can watch, I should, I'm gonna back up, 6:30, there are a stream of cars that drop kids off who wanna come into our buildings that early. And that's because they don't have the car, they're obviously getting dropped off on the way to work. And so, I think, you know, we have to know that families' schedules are what they are. Everyone has a different schedule. And so, we might be helping some families too. So, families that do have more early mornings, they might, especially with younger kids, it might actually help them, is what I saw when I was a teacher with a school district that started at 7:30, is that they got dropped off on their way to work. And it worked pretty, like, I never heard anything negative in Sac Rapids, and I mean, I taught there for nine years, and it never was a topic of a conversation, which was crazy to me. Because when I came here, I mean, it was a, you know, it was a true conversation that was very hurtful to people for, when they heard that we might change times. So, I, it's, so, those hurt, those feelings are real, and we're gonna have to plan for them. And talking to Jeremiah Mack about Magic Adventures, and those types of things that we can do, talking to the high school principals, what can we do with our, both our youth service and that education class? Are there any things that we can do to free up some students to help in a morning situation? Yeah.
And then, why did we need to add five days to seniors but three for the rest? Is that because they usually get out early?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. And once again, we'll dip into that just by cutting out, through the calendaring process, those half-days, which I think we, our whole community is gonna embrace of not having a half a day. Those are really challenging to find daycare for, and they're really challenging for staff because you're altering a schedule and you're really not doing anything that's routine, and kids can feel it. And it's, it's a, it's a pretty bumpy day across the district. So, we can give a 1.5 of those days back right away.
My question as well. Melissa, if you wanna pull up slide 10, to make that...
You said 10?
Number 10, please. So, one of the things that we would have to add for preparation if we decide to move forward with this plan would be, would be changing the custom and the culture for the seniors who typically finish their school year before Memorial Day weekend. The expectation, as I understand it, would be they would have to come the following week as well. But other districts do that. Their last day, they have graduation, and that's how they handle that. But I just wanted to point that out, that that would be a substantial change to a tradition and a custom that we have in our district that we would likely have to prepare families and students for over time because of the number of days and hours that the seniors have to accomplish for the state.
Sure. I think that would be one that I would love for our high school principals to work with student council, work with some student groups to, like, what are their ideas and how to make that end-of-the-year special. But also, like, knowing that that's a year away, and like, what pieces of things can we plan for in the calendaring process to help eliminate some of those choices and lessen that? And then, also, you know, calendars, what legislative options do we have? You know, are there some options to, like, what we have, who knows? We could have construction going on that year, you know, in a year. I don't think we will, but you could. And you could do different things because of circumstances that are happening in districts. Sometimes, those circumstances lead to good solutions for how to combat a problem like that. But also, student voice and the calendar process.
And on the calendar process, does it necessarily have to be on the end, or could we fill?
Or sure.
Should we fill, could we fill in days in the middle so we don't have so many days out of school during the school year?
I don't think one educator would want us to fill it in at the end. It truly would be to try fill in some of those traditional things that we're not used to. And then, looking at the hours, and I had our, our business department, Amy Staubach is awesome with this, but like, truly looking at our hours and making sure that it's that exact number. Right now, I know it is, but through that calendar process, I think we can dip that back and make it so it's not at the end of the year.
If we were to look at adding those days at the beginning, there's a process we would have to go through with the state of Minnesota because we traditionally start after Labor Day. There is a process that you can apply for to start...
Hold on, watch.
Right. But I mean, we could also front-load the days. It would be another option. So, calendar committee really will have a lot of different options they'll have to pursue when it's time to sit down and talk about if we process moving forward. And I just wanna stress also, because I think there's maybe a little, still a little bit of misunderstanding in the community, we're not talking about a change for this September. Talking about September, potentially, of 2024. So, if people are panicked about changes occurring quickly, that's not our intent at all. Any other discussion?
I would just say that if it is approved, and we start that in 2024, we should have some follow-up presentations during that school year to let us know how it's going, pros and cons, because no plan is perfect. You go in there with the best intentions. But, you know, the backup, or the other questions, you know, what if we start to see negative results? You know, what's the contingency plan there? So, just some other things that I think we need to talk about.
We did talk about that in committee, that were we to make any changes at all, you know, any choice, that it's really difficult to go backwards and to go back to what we had before. And so, that's why we've really tried to take a thoughtful, long-view approach because all of the pieces, Hoagland Transportation, the number of hours students have to have and the state requirements, if you'd move, it's a big, you know, Jenga tower. You move one thing, something else is affected. So, you're correct. We don't wanna rush into anything, and we certainly wanna evaluate it as we're going. But in terms of a contingency plan, I don't know that that's maybe the language that we would be using. Do you wanna address any more of that?
Yeah, I think it's, I mean, I think we'll know more as we move forward. I think, you know, making decisions early of whether to get into some of those town hall for presentations like this, and then seeing if we need to do some, a survey, might help us delineate some of those contingency needs. But right now, with it being so close together, I feel like, you know, I'm excitedly optimistic that it's not what was presented around 10 years ago. And so, I really do feel like we're really made huge gains, and they're really similar gains to what, like, every neighboring school district that we can touch, that we collaborate with. It's the schedule that they have. I mean, so it feels like it's, it's not one that's gonna alienate us. It should be one that unites us as a community and really allows us to do things together. Our teachers doing professional development together, cross-building, professional development together, dropping off your students at one place and just continuing on to the next place rather than having an hour and a half in between. Like, it really should unify us. That doesn't mean to say, like, we haven't even talked about the educator challenges. Like, so, I know our building principals are gonna have challenges of what to do because buses are gonna have to drop off in a window that's, you know, maybe five minutes longer than they're used to. There's some things that happen that we will have to continue to plan for. Some will be with the community that will need contingency plans to support, and some will be to help support our buildings as well.
I'm glad you brought up the staff issue also because that's something the committee talked about is because the start and end times currently are so far apart, it's extremely difficult to have elementary staff attend a meeting with high school staff, you know, secondary staff. So, those are, we were listening to some of those issues as well as people, you know, from, both from the administrator's position and from the staff's position. from, both from the administrator's position and from the staff position of those. So that was certainly part of the discussion as well. I'm glad Melissa brought up the daycare issues because I, I think that's something that we've talked about in smaller groups, is that our daycare is at Magic Adventures' waiting list, and we want to grow the program, but there's a lot of challenges to that right now, and the least of which is staff. So I think that's something we're gonna be working on this year.
I think as a bridge gap from now until the next board meeting, I think we'll get this presentation out with some communication so that the, the story is ours of what's really happening, so that, is what I fear, is that all of a sudden people are gonna start saying that we're switching the times for next year, you know, and that, that can happen in the community, we don't want that. We wanna make sure that they know they're taken care of, planning for them, and we'll communicate something later this week.
Casey, Melissa? Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it. Moving on in the agenda to item number eight, innovation and leadership, we're gonna have some discussion and from Tina Burkholder, our Director of Business Services, about our current cash flow update. I did. As a matter of fact, I missed completely item number seven, and I apologize for that. That's why Tina didn't jump right up out of her seat. So please excuse me, I'm in summer mode as well. So we're gonna back up to item number seven, teaching and learning. We do have three items under that. Our first item is gonna be a discussion of Monticello Eight Eight Two Online. I'd like to welcome instructor and teacher David Reeves to the podium to give us a briefing on this, and I apologize for skipping over you.
Gosh, I was, I thought I was gonna get out of something there for a second. No need to apologize. I'm David, thanks for introducing me, but I work with the Eight Eight Two Online program this year, my first year in the program, and just wanna provide a quick update and recap, and hopefully it's quick. I have a tendency to over-explain things and get long-winded. Now I'm concerned I'm gonna go a little too quick through this, but the goal is quick, short, and sweet, and I want you to, I want you to leave wanting to hear more, not wanting to hear less, so that's the goal here. Gavin, what do I say? Hit it, or what's the, there we go. If I say hit it, you might start playing an instrument back there. All righty. Just, uh, kinda before we move forward, just the staffing that we have allocated for the online program as we head into next year, as of today, are the following. Rocky Stein and I are both full-time employees within the online program, and then we're, there's a supplementation, supplemented role with Sarah Frost, who works at the ALP, and she has point two of her contract, which equates to about an hour and a half a day that she has online responsibilities for, and that's been a great help for us, is she, she's used her science background and skillset to provide oversight on our high school science courses. So that's the team moving forward, and, um, yeah, I think each of us, this was our first year as part of this program, the learning curve is very high. I think each of us bring confidence in what we do, but also just, it's continually humbling experiences as you come across navigating how to serve kids in a new format, and it was a, it was challenging, but it was, it was good challenging, it was growth challenging, so hit it, Gavin. All right. So I just wanna provide just a pretty quick, basic, what, what's, what's been happening with our program and why is it happening? And that's kinda what we'll limit it to this evening. But before we talk about Eight Eight Two Online specifically, I thought it'd be helpful to kinda drop some information within the context of what's happening in the state of Minnesota, because what's happening in Monticello is, it largely parallels that, like, there's nothing unique happening here that's grossly atypical from what online programs are seeing across the state. A few years, not a few years, a few months, a few months ago, there was a, the University of Minnesota had a, there's a research center that kind of collaborated with the Minnesota Department of Ed. There's a sixty-page report, I promise you I didn't read all of it, but there was a sixty-page report called "The Landscape of K-12 Online Schooling in Minnesota," and what it did was just try to provide, make sense out of what's been happening the last few years with online learning and what they're seeing across the state with a number of programs and number of enrollments and things like that. And I'm drawing some information from that report, go, go on, Gavin. First of all, just in terms of the number of providers, meaning schools that provide a state-approved online program, if you go back five years to 2018, 2019, that number was thirty-three, that's tripled as of this last school year to ninety. So you see a huge influx of the amount of programs that are being provided. And then next is just the number of students that are enrolled in these programs, and you see that number's gone up pretty substantially as well. So there has been a, and a lot of this, right, is you can't, you can't negate the impact of COVID that has plays into these numbers, but we're just seeing a rise in the prevalence of online learning across the state of Minnesota. Keep rolling, Gavin. I was, as I was kinda looking up information for this, and as I was Googling different programs and things like that, it's kinda creepy because when you go on social media, it knows what you're looking, right? And then it embeds the advertisement, so this is what I saw on my Facebook page, you know, as schools kinda look at, you know, there's more programs that are out there, there's more students that are entering programs, schools are trying to capitalize on this, it does become a business model of sorts, and it's that, hey, Eden Prairie is open to all students, you know? Minnesota's best online school, I don't know how they earned that title. Feel your dreams here, Minnesota Virtual Academy, that's run out of Houston Public Schools down in the bluff country in southeast Minnesota. Minnetonka Online, just programs throughout the state that advertise throughout the state of Minnesota, and that's kind of a reality of how the law sits right now. A student can take up to half of their classes in an online setting. So you'll have a kid that can be attending an International Falls High School but taking a Minnetonka online class to supplement their day, and that's just the reality of the law as it's written, as families and kids have the autonomy to choose and supplement their schooling with some online options. So that's a law that's consistently evolving, there's been updates to it as, as of the last legislative session as well, so it's something as we kind of address where are we going with our online learning, we need to stay in tune with that because, again, a lot of it's unprecedented, but it, it has become a, for many districts, it has become a, a selling point, you know? This is not vernacular I have used this year in terms of salesmanship, in terms of trying to get kids into our program, and I'll kinda go, maybe talk through the nuances of that in a bit, but that, there, it is a competitive landscape in many regards. Next. Key findings from that report on the landscape of online schooling. First of all, it was determined that there is a distinct difference between emergency distance learning, what was put in place in response to COVID versus the planned, you know, coordinated, approved programs that districts are putting out now. And a lot of times, parents are, when they think online learning, they think kind of that holy smokes responsible that districts were in a few years ago. It's, it's a lot different vibe in how it's approached with a lot more intentionality and a lot more time to put into what we're putting in front of kids. Secondary online schooling, which is what we have in our district, a six-twelve program, that tends to be asynchronous, meaning kids are taking their classes independently, largely accessing their coursework at their, on their own time, at their own pace, and, and working through things independently with teacher support. Family preference is key in that because it's, we'll talk about, as families are looking at choosing online schools, a huge thing that they're desiring is schedule flexibility, and offering asynchronous programming is something that doesn't offer flexibility as kids can engage and work in a variety of places and at a variety of times. Health concern, seeking a school where a child can work at their own pace, these are all things that on a state level are true, and as I was reading it, it's like, wow, this has really been true in Monticello. The answers don't necessarily, don't, there, there's nuance to it, but they always kinda fall into these categories. This, this is why people are choosing online schooling, again, in the state as a whole and within our district. Hit it, Gavin. All righty, so with Eight Eight Two Online specifically, what's happening and why? Next, Gavin, thank you, sir. All right, so what's been happening this year just in terms of enrollment? Becky Walker, Becky Watcher, Becky? Becky Walker? Becky W. ran these numbers for us, she's our Infinite Campus Guru, and there was a total of one hundred and seventeen online enrollments this year in district, ninety-four of those enrollments were full-time, twenty-three of them were part-time. So that, that's kinda what was happening as kids were coming to us, and there's different reasons for why a kid would come full-time versus a part-time, and it all kinda centers on family choice, and then also sometimes there's just unforeseen circumstances where kids become an online student, not because they want to be, but just because circumstances dictate that. And again, the family choice, it largely mirrors, again, like I said, what we see at the statewide level. Flexibility, and that flexibility's not an end in itself, but it's flexibility as a means for my child to work more hours, flexibility as a means for us to travel more as a family, to spend more time at the cabin up north, to engage in hockey programs in the cities, in baseball leagues, and, and we had a kid that was part of competitive snowmobiling, like, there's just so many different reasons why families want that flexibility to be form-fitted to their situation. I will note that twenty percent of our students came from the same faith community in town, and that's just a demographic that I think it, we wanna serve all our demographics well, and we start trying to be mindful of serving all our demographics well, and that's just a pattern that I think is noteworthy. Circumstances that cause students to be enrolled, those can be temporary, just for a certain amount of time, or they can be for a whole year long. Sometimes throughout the course of the year, I was really thankful our high school counselors just did a really good job of advocating for their students who might have been in a bind for some reason, what's a solution? And sometimes over the course of the year, things happen, and, and counselors would approach us and say, hey, you know, we have a PSEO student who they're, they need a high school class, but their college schedule doesn't really jive with what we do at the high school, can they take an online course? We had a lot of students taking, PSEO kids taking one or two online courses with us. Sometimes it was due to disciplinary reasons, you know, a kid would be out of school temporarily, but education is still provided, and they'd hop online for a temporary season. The issues get more, you know, heavy in terms of a lot of student health issues, both mental and physical health reasons, where students would come online to have their educational services met, whether they were in hospital or not in hospital, but just needing a different, more flexible way to meet their needs while they're going through those health circumstances. So that's kind of a, and please interrupt me at any time, I'm not even, be rude. Cindy, make sure you interrupt me if I'm saying something that you disagree with. Hey, Gavin, keep going, sir, thank you. A big focus of this year now is as we've had these students come into our program is just developing our curriculum. As I said, from a state level, it does make sense, and from what families want, it makes sense to provide asynchronous options where kids are engaging and work independently on their own time and from anywhere, so to speak. But what we're seeing is we wanna provide more dynamic student options, and, and that's been hard. For me, it feels like, I like to get in creative mode, but for me, it just has felt like a year of swings and misses in terms of trying to think of what are some synchronous options, like, and by that I mean classes that are synced up with peers, where they're hopping on Google Meets, and it's, it's a group of us going through some world history together, or it's synchronous even field trips, just opportunities like that. And I, I've underestimated the desire that families just have, they, they want flexibility, they want autonomy over the day, and, and part of it, we wanna work with that, we wanna acknowledge that reality, and we'll continue to provide, the bulk of our courses will be asynchronous, but a path forward that we're realizing, we're slowly coming to knowledge of, is hybrid courses, where we'll meet with students, small groups, once or twice a week, and, and then that'll supplement their asynchronous learning, just because there's so many depth of conversation, so much connections between students, individual support that can be offered when you have more synchronous. And a lot of times, again, it's balancing what students want with what students need, right? And we're trying to find that perfect marriage of how can we provide dynamic options that, that meet students where they're at, but also challenge students and provide them with depth of learning that they need to be challenged by. So that's that, thanks, Gavin, keep going, sir. Policies and procedures, this has been a lot of the year as well, just, ah, what a boring topic of conversation, right? Policies and procedures, but when I think of it is how are we gonna provide a framework that builds for student success? How are we gonna provide a framework and put policies in place that when we lean on those policies and procedures, it means we're leaning into things that are there for students' best interests? And, and that's taken a lot of time and intentionality and, and thinking like, you know, we have kids coming into our program, incoming students, how do we, how do we make sure they're even suited for online learning? Not every kid's suited for online learning, so how do we screen that? You know, what are their reading scores? What's their academic engagement like? What else? What, what input do we have from teachers in an in-person setting that would lead us to believe how this student would do online? So there's a lot of intentionality that goes into that. Once kids are admitted, how do we set them up with counseling services or social worker connections, the IEP services and 504 plans, that all, all those things need to be intentionally and properly put in place so that when kids come into our online program, that they're getting the support that they need to succeed? So that's a big thing. Once kids are in our program and they're struggling, or even if they're not struggling, what interventions and supports do we have throughout the course of the semester in terms of how do we set up family conferences? How do we set up goals and contracts with families? Communication that took place over the course of the semester, just all embedded about meeting in individual, meeting kids as individuals and in small groups, just all part of interventions that we had to think through just to, again, promote a program that's built on student success. Outgoing students, there's another thing when you have an online program, it's a, it's, it's a, what do I wanna say? It's, it's something to, that we feel a weight to steward well, you know? And we don't, we don't want kids to come into our online program and just experience repeated failure, so what's our barometer? Well, what if a student isn't doing well? And we just kinda, we ended up identifying a barometer, if a student's failing more than two classes a semester, for the good of that student, they need to return to in-person. But again, these are all policies and procedures that, it's kind of wrestling a lot the first semester in terms of what we're gonna do in second semester. I was really thankful by the time we hit goal on second semester, it was clarifying with parents, hey, here's the end game, here's what we need to see your student do at the end, here's what we're gonna do throughout the semester, here's when we're gonna have a conference if your student's struggling, here's when we're gonna do one-on-ones, and it's all articulated, parents agree to it beforehand, we're all on the same page, and it just hummed a lot smoother as we were articulating policy and procedures that we felt were for the good of students, and, and just trying to set them up for success. And I'm very thankful that families and parents really responded well to that, and they took it, they stewarded the opportunity well as well. So, yeah, and the whole purpose of that, again, is to maintain and uphold our priority, which is, you know, I'd always tell families at intake throughout, and then even at outtake, when you're telling families that they need to leave the program, the, the purpose here isn't to do what's best for our program, the purpose here is to do what's best for your student, and, and that hits the ground at a very individual level, and that's where we always want to be, is hitting, is, is having that as our priority and pursuit. So, yeah. Also, as kids are entering our program and they're leaving and going to other programs, and there, there's just a great need for us to become more cohesive with other programs and departments across the district, that's special ed programming, that's, as kids were coming to our program from the ALP, and kids are going from online to ALP, and it's coming from the high school and going back and forth, there's just, there, there's a lot of impacts there that don't immediately meet the eye, and holy smokes, it, they, they hit us at semester time, and there's just a lot of learnings that we need to take place in terms of just how we needed to better embed ourselves within programming and the norms of other things in the district so that things are just humming, there's greater continuity between staff and programming. Again, the whole purpose is we don't wanna be reactive, we just wanna be proactive and clear with our families, so. Yeah, moving on, Gavin. So every kid, every day is the district slogan, and Rocky, she added wherever they are is a, kind of the online tailspin of that, and first I thought it was cheesy, but I like it. It's great, and that really comes into play quite a bit. You know, I'm a person that as I'm kinda assessing how the year went, I, I look a lot at things that need to improve, that's just kinda the way my mindset goes, like, how can we make this better for next year? But, you know, as I was talking with Rocky and recapping the year, she said there was a lot more wins this year than losses, and one of the things that she said was she was shocked by how well she got to connect and know kids. And, and that was very evident to me at graduation when we had kids that were in tears that Mrs. Stein wasn't there, you know? She was the reason I graduated, one-on-one meets every day, that continual help, this educator that used her platform in a powerful way to get to know kids, an unconventional platform, but still knowing that the goal is to form camaraderie and connection with a kid and take that seriously, and I was so thankful to, to see that that could be done in an online setting. An encouragement to me and a, and a challenge to me throughout the years when we did have to serve kids that were dealing, that didn't wanna be online. Talking with a young man who's getting cancer treatments in a hospital yet he still needs Talking with a young man who's getting cancer treatments in a hospital, yet he still needs education, right, and just having to be that educational staff member there, but to, but to provide that with the heart and grace that the situation warranted, and those were humbling, but very just rewarding avenues by which, again, online is just the method by which we try to, it's not the focus, right? The focus is always love and heart and intentionality for a kid. I was just kind of pleased to see that the online model doesn't negate the, how that can be channeled and communicated with kids. So, so thankful for this year, so thankful for the support that we have throughout the year. We know that it's a numbers game from year to year, but we're thankful that, we know that growing in quantity is important, but we're thankful that the priorities always grow in quality, too. You grow in both, but growing quality is extremely important, and we're just doing our best to steward the opportunity to the best we can, and really thankful to do it. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. I appreciate your very in-depth presentation to us this evening. I'd like to open it up just for a couple of questions for you. Is that all right?
Yeah, sure, yeah.
One of the questions I had was, how many senior students did we have out of the 117 or so?
Good question. So, senior students, this number I'm giving you, 24, is kids that were, they could be full-time with us, or any kid that needed a class to graduate. So we had some seniors that were with us part-time, taking four classes with us because they were coupling online with Wright Tech. We had some kids, seniors, that were taking one or two classes with PSEO, but of the 24 kids, seniors that were involved with 882 Online, 20 finished. One young lady has a newborn baby, she's, she's going to be finishing next, next, next year. We had a couple that are finishing in summer school as we speak, and we have another guy that just, he'll finish next fall, I hope, but yeah, we had 20 of the 24 cross the finish line and made it to graduation day, so we were pleased to see that. Yeah, but, you know, we had just under 90% of the courses taken this year were successfully completed as well, you know, and it's kind of, as we're, that's data that, for an online program, that's a high success rate, right? And that's something to hang our hat on, just when you're talking with parents and they're about intaking kids and things like that. You want to present them to the fact that, hey, we have a proven track record, their kids can be successful here, but again, I just always shied away from the vernacular of your dreams start here and come here. It's because parents take that decision very seriously, and those conversations with parents that are learning more about our program, that ends up being a 30 to 40-minute phone call a lot, that where a parent is just really trying to search for a proper program for their kid, and I just try to stay as objective as possible and acknowledging and respecting their concerns, and just, there is a, there is a risk associated with doing a program that a student's never done before. You know, we had kids that failed miserably this year. Fortunately, it was a small number, but that is a reality that can happen, and just putting those realities in front of parents and trying to just make sure that families are making these decisions with their eyes wide open and with great intentionality.
What does our enrollment for online look like for next year? Is it kind of staying the same? Are we adding on? How, what are the outlooks?
That's a great question, too. So, I mean, there's turnover, one thing, and Cindy, you might want to interrupt me on this, I mean, we're still kind of new in it in terms of recognizing what patterns are in place, but a pattern that seems to be kind of prevalent right now is the fact that we have some kids that are coming online for ninth and 10th grade, and what their junior and senior year, it's a very natural progression just to do, pursue PSEO programming. So, there's a lot of students that are exiting program for that. I, you know, to be honest with you, Melissa, I don't know, as of today, last year, and as of today this year, I don't know the comparison. Last, the year prior, '21, '22, there was 60 full-time students in the online program, there was 90 full-time enrolled this past year. What the trajectory of that is, it's a little too soon for me to tell, but, I don't know.
Do you typically say, you programming?
Yeah, it's nuts, too, you know, we put some stuff on, you know, we, I don't want to say we advertised this, but we communicated, like, hey, enrollment for next fall and stuff like that, and you hear crickets, and then like, for weeks. And then this morning, there was four applications, and I don't know what happened, what was in the air this weekend that caused people to apply to an online program, but it just, you know, it just kind of hits and, I haven't been able to identify patterns yet, so, yeah, good question. Wish I had a better answer.
Sort of jump on Melissa's question, from a staffing perspective, what's the number that you could go up to with your current staff?
That's a great question, too, you know, gosh, the number in mind is 150, like, and that might be me being way overconfident, it's just, what's hard is, I think, you know, we're still new to it since that, you know, we see how we can serve kids now and provide, like, one-on-one support to kids, and hop on Google meets and help kids out, and have the bandwidth to do that. I guess I'm, I think we have room to grow and still provide that, I just want to keep that sacred. The individual support is very time-consuming, but it's very needed, and just want to make sure kids are continually getting that. And, yeah, what that barometer is, that's a great question, I don't exactly know, but hovering between the 125, 150 mark still feels appropriate considering what we currently have.
Right, yeah, because of advertising, if you start pulling in more, it's to reduce the effectiveness of the program. If you have too many kids, that's always a good start.
Yep, for sure.
I have a question about, we've really changed our focus over the last five or more years to college and career preparation for our highest juniors and seniors, highest, not high grade wise, but the highest grade levels of students. Can you talk about how you incorporate the college and career preparation into the online environment for our students?
Yeah, yeah, and that's an area of growth for us as well. So, this last year, the careers course was an asynchronous class that kids did on their own. Next year, it's going to be a hybrid course where they're going to be required to, it's going to track and follow along with our high school curriculum better in terms of kids needing to do job site visits and kids doing campus visits throughout the, and we'll provide opportunities for kids to do that and come in. So, that's one thing. Another thing is, we want to extend our offerings for kids that are on a college track. So, right now, Rocky's getting AP certification so that she can offer AP Calculus next year, that wasn't available this year. In July, I'll be taking classes so that AP History can be offered. That just wasn't something that was offered to our kids last year, and we want to expand, want to expand that, because, like you said, that's a, that's a point of emphasis that we need to get in on that momentum as well, so.
Are we keeping track of the trajectory of our graduates, whether they're going on to career training, college, jobs, internships? I think that would be good information to have
Gotcha, good.
On the road, and since we're still a rather small program, it shouldn't be too hard to track that information.
Absolutely, I like that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any further discussion? Thank you very much, Mr. Reeves. Oh, I'm sorry.
My children are fortunate to have you as a teacher in a classroom. Unfortunate, a lot of kids don't get to have you in the classroom because it's obvious to your passion, you're an excellent educator. What you're doing with this program and the vision and kind of the direction you're going with, I think is a great fit for you. I think you're doing a great job, and it sounds like Rocky and your other staff are kind of really moving this forward, and that was kind of our goal with this, when we first started talking about this, is moving it forward for opportunities to everybody and all kids in all situations, and it's like you're really doing a great job with that, so.
Appreciate your kind words.
We're lucky to have you in our district. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, it's, and I just feel so fortunate, too, you know, I just, the reason that, that study that came out about why kids are going online, it also included in is that why are staff going online? It was for same reasons. Staff were identifying the flexibility that's provided, is hitting staff's families personally, and just this job, the flexibility that afforded my family this year just hit our family really well. My wife and I are very thankful for that. I know Rocky would say the same thing about she and Mike, her family. So, we're just very grateful in so many ways. I ran into Toni Chido once this year, if you guys don't know Toni, she's been in the district for a number of years, but, yeah, she talked about Rocky specifically. She says, I used to work in Rocky Stein's classroom. She is such a powerful educator, such an asset, like, it grieves me not to see her in a classroom, and it does, right, because she was those things. But I just kind of said, Toni, trust me, like, she is being a powerful asset in our online program, too, you know, and, and there's a learning curve, and it's humbling, and, but, but we, we are, again, trying to steward the opportunity well, and just trying to make the most of our energies to help kids in a different way, so, yeah.
Well, you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
Mr. Reeves, I just have to, you know, point out whether, I mean, you're, to connect back to Mr. Hagley, but you're very humble person, and what that these guys aren't seeing is the family meetings that I've seen, the intake that I've seen orchestrated, you know, from Cindy to you, to Rocky, to Barb Mann, to Janet Cordell, to Sarah Frost, but just the, it's, 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 everything about this program is something that we are really proud of, and we should be, because it does come back to relationships, and you are an absolute art at building positive relationships. I've seen your class online, and you've invited me to that several times, and we had a chance to be a part of many of those classes, whether it's David or Rocky Steins or Janet Cordell when we had elementary. The relationships, the kids are beaming, they're doing exactly what Jeff said his kids were thinking about you in the classroom. That's what's happening in your classroom online still, and it's fun. So, we should get some board members this year to partake in some of those online meetings, because it's, you leave, you know, just with a huge smile on my face every time I do, so.
Yeah, they're fun, they're good. Appreciate the kind words, thank you everybody. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Returning to item number seven on our agenda, we're going to go to item B. We're going to welcome Mr. Nathan Herfindall, Dr. Nathan Herfindall, to the podium to talk about a Monticello High School choir trip.
Well, thanks again for the introduction. My name is Nathan Herfindall, I direct the high school choirs, Monticello High School. Let me get over here to the right. Yeah, I'm here to talk to you about proposed 2024 choir tour, it'd be to Chicago, Illinois, March 21st through 24th. Little background on tours, the high school choir has toured biannually, although COVID forced a delay in our tours, so what should have been a tour in 2021 wasn't able to happen. Prior to that, we had a great tour of Chicago in 2017, as well as a, an excellent tour of Washington DC in 2019. Who would be going? This tour is open to any member of the Monticello High School Acappella Choir, that's our audition choir. They must be registered members of the above ensemble to be eligible, and a key point here is these are optional. Tours aren't required for students, they're optional for anybody who's interested. As I mentioned already, the tour would be March 21st through the 24th. This butts up to the start of our spring break, so there would be a school day on March 21st that the students would be missing when we travel to Chicago. Friday is slated as a, as a teacher, staff development day, and we would be returning on Sunday, the 24th, which is the Sunday before the week of spring break. So, what I like about the proposed dates is we've done tours in the past, our DC tour, for example, we were gone almost the entire spring break, which on one hand was great, because we were going somewhere nice, but when you get back and you're right back into school, it can be, it can feel like you didn't have a break. And so, this still gives them that Monday through Friday as a break in order to kind of enjoy spring break. And, and as I think would be expected, given that we're going to Chicago, we'd be traveling via coach bus. One of the reasons why, why Chicago is a destination is generally, when we tour every other year, we have members of the choral program that have been on a tour, so they can help educate people who haven't been on what those are like. So, if you have a tour that is maybe to a further destination, New York City or something, which costs more, you can have other students say, hey, this is why it's worth it. We don't have any of those left anymore, the students that had gone on our last choir tour have graduated. And so, I thought I should pick someplace closer, because it still is a lot of bang for your buck, it has everything to offer, but the price point is low enough that I think it can be enticing for students that might be interested in going. This is all proposed, there is no official itinerary, this is just a generic sort of idea of what we could be doing, but some of the sightseeing opportunities would be the Museum of Science and Industry, Shedd Aquarium, Magnificent Mile, Watertown Place, Skydeck Chicago, we had a great trip at that last time, Lincoln Park Zoo, Millennium Park and the Navy Pier. In addition to that, this isn't really exclusively or even meant to be just a sightseeing tour, this is a musical experience for these students. Among those would be performances arranged throughout the three days that we're there. The way these tour companies work is as many times as I'd like to perform, they will make that happen. Have a private clinic with an adjudicator. The last time we were there in Chicago, we went to Elmhurst University and had a great experience with a lady that you've probably heard, because most radio jingles that had happened between about 1990 and early 2000s was her voice. So, the kids really enjoyed that experience working and learning from her. We'll, we'll get to see a Broadway show, those tickets are, performances are still being lined up, so that's TBD. We will, however, get to see Verdi's Aida, which I know not many students of mine have had the opportunity to see in opera, and if you want to see one that is about as much spectacle as you can get, I know the last time I saw it in, in Los Angeles, there was actual horses on the stage during the production, so it's really big and grandiose. Within the package, we work with a travel company, I'll talk more about that in a minute, would be three breakfasts, meal at Gino's East, we've done that before, that's a really cool little pizza joint. If you've been there, you get to write on the walls and kind of leave your mark that you're part of the city there. A meal at Subway, that'll be right when we arrive, and then Navy Pier meal ticket, if you've ever been down to the Navy Pier, there's lots of different places to eat, and so that would be an opportunity for them. The sort of liability things, there's a motor coaches insured, there's a group liability insurance, and then an act of terrorism insurance. All those things can be provided in detail when we have a contract. All right, this is the inclusions also, this is three and eight set at specifically selected hotel. The way I like to do my, my tours, these companies suggest 15 to 20 students per chaperone, I like 10. I like a 10 to one ratio. So, I want to bring, if I'm bringing 50 students, I want to bring five chaperones. But I don't want the chaperones to have to pay full price, so we factor into the cost a half-price for all chaperones. So, that'd be five half-priced chaperone tickets, a deluxe motor coach, trip manager handles all the details. It's a very detailed itinerary when we get it, it's literally down to the, down to the half hour in many cases. Taxes and gratuities included, and a complete travel packet with all the medical release forms and the rooming lists and all of those details. Continuing right along, this is our pricing information, you can see two different price points. In full disclosure, there's more than 53 people in Acappella Choir for next year, but it's unlikely that everybody chooses to go on a tour. But in the event everybody did, I always asked for, okay, what's the cost of the tour for everybody? Now, the reality is such that if every person in Acappella decided they wanted to go, it would be likely that I would open up the tour to another high school choir in order to, in order to maybe lower the cost of that trip. The reason it's more expensive is because you're bringing a second bus, and you're basically half-filling both of them, whereas this price point is completely full bussing. And you can see that when we break down the pricing, this is occupancy of rooms, so you can, you can select to be in a room with three classmates, all the way down to in your own room, and then that just changes the cost of the, again, for obvious reasons, the cost of the hotel room then changes. So, that gives us flexibility in there. As I said, if we had to have 65, we would actually probably end up with closer to 80, opening it up to another group, just to keep that cost down. But I really wanted to pick a tour that, that was under $1,000. I know the last time we went to Chicago for almost an identical trip, and this just goes to show how times have changed, that, that tour was $650, so you can see that it's just gotten more expensive. I know my family just got back from Disney, and it, it has gotten more expensive. So, that's a reality. As far as paying for the tour goes, generically, we have monthly payments, payments will start at the beginning of the year. In addition to that, students have the opportunity to do individual fundraising, toughset their tour costs, and then the other incentive is, because we fundraise every year, there's a, there's a handful of our high school choir members that already have fundraising balances in accounts set aside for them to use on the tour. So, they may have a third of the tour already paid for when they sign up. So, that is sort of, kind of, again, a very brief, I know Reeves said he was going to be brief, but I'm going to actually be brief. I love him. That's a very brief sort of rundown of the tour. What questions do you have for me? Again, understanding this isn't the Again, understanding this is in the early stages, I just wanted to bring it to you ahead of time. I don't have an itinerary yet. I don't have any details. The beautiful thing is, though, is they're very flexible. Sunshine Travel is the company we're using. Very flexible in, in what we do, so we can provide them any feedback. I can bring them anything you suggest as options or critiques as well.
Discussion among the board? Questions?
I think it's awesome. Unfortunately, we'll have students that will probably never have an opportunity to see an opera or even go to Chicago and do these things. I think.
No, I, we had a, a former student who, his mom works in the district, and, and he came to see our musical this past year. And I was talking to him before the performance, and he said, and he went to Chicago and DC. He was fortunate to go on both tours. He was a 10th grader when he went to Chicago, so he was a senior for DC. And he said, I still, I still can't, he said, no experience I've had compares to going to Chicago that first time on that choir tour. And I know from my own experiences, going on tours like that with, with classmates and with your choir, or with any group, with your band, with your whatever, are fantastic. So, yeah, I, it's, it, in full disclosure, it's, it's extra work for me. It's easier to not do a tour. It's easier to not, not spend a Saturday and Sunday of spring break on a bus with kids. But it's such an experience for them that, that, that it's worth it. So.
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah, no, no problem.
I have a, just a question about, you mentioned partnering with another choir. And I wasn't sure if you meant another choir from Monticello High School or another choir from another school district.
I did mean another choir from Monticello High School. I would probably, in, in the event that happens, I don't foresee that happening. It's just, I've done it enough now to know that not everybody is going to have the means to do it or the desire. But if everybody did, I would probably go to a concert choir as the, or even our chamber singers, if there was, there's so much overlap between those two. But concert choir would give me, you know, another 40-plus individuals to open up the trip to. So, yeah, I, I would think about doing it that way. I know a lot of districts do band and choir tours and carry instruments everywhere. And that's why I don't teach band. It's, instruments are too much work, so I carry mine with me. But, yeah, it would be probably the concert choir.
So to be clear, we're not looking at partnering with another school district on the, at this point in time?
Right. Yes. There you'd get into the scheduling things we talked about earlier, and does spring break align and all those things? So no, we have enough, we have plenty of students in the choir program at the high school to open this up to some others that would like to go if, if that were in need.
And when are you planning to roll this out?
I would like to do it right at the beginning of the school year, because the more payments that I can spread it out, the cheaper each payment. So if we can have a meeting right at the beginning of the school year and say, your, your deposit is due such and such a date, and then just do monthly payments from, from there, that makes it, I think, the easiest on families, because it spreads it out into seven payments or something instead of four or three.
Mentioned some students already have a set of, or set amount in a fundraising balance. If they, this is more of a general question. If they choose not to go for whatever reason, what, where does that fundraising balance go?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. So that's been the way that we've done it forever. And, and the, and the verbiage in sort of my handbook, my choir syllabus, all of that stuff, would state that in the event that your fundraising balance, which is earmarked for you to go on tour, doesn't get used for a tour, then that gets pushed into our general travel Fund 11 to, to, to afford for choirs to go to contests or pay for busing or, or things like that. So, yeah, nobody gets a check cut to them at the end of the year for their, their $100. Right. I've had students ask.
Yeah, I didn't think they did. I was, I just wanted to ask the question.
Yeah, so it would just go back into the, to my activities account.
And to be clear, this is fundraising that has been a portion to a student because of a group fundraiser, not because Great Aunt Sally gave them $100 for their trip.
It's an individual fundraiser, so it's been pizza sales for, for the last several years. Haggy's pizzas and then lots and lots of pizzas. But, so the way it works and would be that, you know, on a, on a tour year, anybody going, 100% of the profit from the fundraiser would go towards their trip. On a non-tour year, and then individuals not going on tour, get a percentage of that. So you would get 50% of your fundraising would go into your individual account. The other 50% would go into the general fundraising budget to, to afford, you know, busing and all of those things. And so, yeah, if you are a, if you're a senior now and you fundraised every year, you could have built up 200, 300, $400. I know we had one student the year we went to Chicago, and she paid for the whole trip with fundraising. So if you want to, you can. It's just kind of up to the individual there. But some of them do have balances. And if they chose to go, then those balances would be applied to their cost of the trip.
Anyone else? Any further discussion? So this is an action item for the board, and so I'll entertain.
I move to approve the Monticello High School choir trip as presented.
Second.
Motion has been brought by Melissa Curtis to approve the Monticello High School choir trip as presented, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 4-0. Congratulations. Dr. Herfindall.
All right. Appreciate it.
Performance at graduation.
Yeah, thank you. Those videos are, they're, they're, they're a trial, but, but they're awesome. Yeah, they're fun. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Moving on to item C under number seven. We have a census recertification presentation from Mr. Jeremiah Mack, Director of Community Education.
Kevin, you want to pull it up? So for those who don't know, community ed gets a lot of their funding based on our census data. So we get general community ed dollars, youth service, youth enrichment, EBE-based funding based on our census count. The State Auditor sent this out. They do an update of census projections every year. So looking at our 2020 census number, we're at 22,874. We went up about 910 student, you know, enrollment population over the last couple of years. So I'm just asking that we do the resolution to increase our census count by, to the new number that the State Auditor has already given us, which will increase our funding for community ed around $8,000 to $9,000 for this school year, just by changing our population. So. That's, and then we just have to have that read and signed, and then we can have Clay send it into the State Auditor. And that'll be our new census number going forward.
This is an action item for the committee. The certification as presented serves as our motion, if I'm correct about that. Clay?
Uh, I think it is presented. I don't think you have to read it. You just have to sign after that.
Seconded by Jeff Hagley. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes 4-0. Thank you, Ms.
Thank you.
Moving on to Innovation and Leadership. Tina Burkholder, our Director of Business Services, is going to give us a cash flow update, followed by a budget approval action item.
All right. So first, I have a cash flow update that was in your packet. And every year, I do a cash flow analysis for the next year and a half of the money coming in and out of the district for the main operating funds, general fund, food service, community ed funds, and how that looks. You don't include the debt service fund that is separate, because that property tax money coming in needs to be specifically for that. You shouldn't really borrow from that for, for cash flow purposes. And so in developing that, used assumptions going in of the revenue, 4% of general education aid coming in, 1% for miscellaneous revenue, looking at the property tax revenue levy that we have in place for the 22 payable, 23 report, and then looking at payroll expenses and accounts payable expenses, knowing that we're going to add staff and that there'll be some salary increases and how that looks. So in that chart, you see that all the ending balances to the right of the screen were all positive. So we don't have to borrow short term, where we would have an interest expense of, I don't know, $80,000 to $90,000. So everything looks good on there. And then we also, I had a couple pages of just where the overall cash and investment balance was versus what I invest, knowing that early February, you know, early March, end of February is when we kind of hit a low point. So just making sure we're investing what we can, and then having funds available for paying bills and, and having our payroll. Any questions on cash flow?
Thank you, Tina. Now, we're going to move to the budget approval for 2023, 24, and this is an action item. Tina's going to give us a presentation on the budget.
There we go. All right. So we're coming to the end, where we have our budget timeline in June, where we're approving next year's budget by July 1st. That's a statute that's in place. Just an overview of all of our funds that we have a budget for and what we monitor. And so I'm just going to summarize all the funds that we've had, that we've talked about in the last couple of board meetings, and highlight any changes that we had. So for our general fund, our main operating fund, revenues at $56.5 million and expenses of $55.4 million, adding $1 million to our fund balance. So those assumptions in place, just so I have it. Our enrollment projections that we did in January, the legislation approving the 4% in our general education aid, increasing money for the cross subsidy, special across subsidy. In here, that wasn't in there last time, was including the library aid that was approved in the legislative session, the student support personnel aid. Looking at our revised compensatory funds with higher families qualifying for free and reduced meals, our federal grants money coming to an end. But we have other grants in place, such as Grow Your Own, MTSS, rigorous coursework. And that for staffing, we've included an additional elementary classroom teacher, increasing our gifted and talented teachers from .8 to 1.0 for general instruction support. Adding an English language teacher, two additional building subs. We already had one at the high school, one and a half reading coaches, three specialized teachers. That was an increase from two to three at the early June, or the assumptions in February. Increasing or adding two behavioral analysts. That was a change, having two behavioral interventionists. And then one full-time education support specialist, one part-time education support specialist. Adding a buildings and grounds director and additional activity advisors for our fall sports with additional participation, anticipation. And then in here also included revisions to the superintendent's contract, if that gets approved, and then also added two contingency positions that we can use for whatever needs that might pop up at the start of the school year. Other assumptions that we have, three retirements that we'll have each year. Our contracts are based on settlements, or what our budget parameters are set by the board. We have building leadership teams developed. We're discontinuing our elementary online program. Our non-salary, non-benefit costs for like supplies and utilities could range anywhere from 0 to 8%. We're not borrowing short term for cash flow, but expenditures might end up half a percent under budget. We have a fund balance policy of 8 to 16%. We have a, a signed committed severance fund balance that we use for those severance obligations. Deferring our third-party billing money for later years when we might need it, when our revenues aren't coming in as much. And our carryover assigned balances will be on hold and evaluated each year, and utilizing our trust for our non-certified employee retirement obligations that don't have sunset languages. So in there, our fund balance is at $9.2 million. But within that, we have different fund balance designations, where our unassigned fund balance will end up to be about 10.8%. Any questions on general fund? Any of those changes or additions? And then we have our special ed cooperative, basically money in and out for the employees that the special ed cooperative contracts with us that they pay for. So that is $11.6 million in and out. Our food service fund, revenue about $2.9 million and expenditures at $2.7 million. This is based on meal estimates that we have, that I listed in the packet. Probably we'll see additional breakfast participation. I don't know if we'll see additional lunch participation. We might. And then we've added three additional positions in there to help with the participation increases and upgrading some of our equipment at Pinewood and Little Mountain. Questions on food service?
That takes into account the new requirements from the state of Minnesota for free breakfast and lunch. That's what you refer.
Yep. So right now, you, it's an estimate on who is free, reduce, or paid status, because that'll change how much we get from the state versus the feds. The state's going to make up the difference of whose eligibility status. I might not get that right, but hopefully my meal estimates will be somewhere right. Community ed fund, looking to a similar year as this current year that we're in as far as childcare and preschool programming and other community ed programming that's happening. So revenues of $4.4 million coming in and $4.00, almost $3 million coming out, adding a little bit to our fund balance for that program. Hockey is another break-even fund, where the, we partner with the Monticello Youth Hockey Association. So in here, we didn't increase ice time, but we might have to look at the ice rates due to increases with salary and benefits and utilities. But for right now, about $450,000 coming in and out. Any surplus, we split that difference 50-50 with the Monticello Youth Hockey Association. And if there's a deficit, they cover that deficit. Debt service is our bond account. So this is based on property tax money coming in. It's normally calculated at 105% of your bond, or your bond payments, principal and interest. But in our truth and taxation hearing that, from December, we do have money that was returned back to the taxpayers on our 2019 project at Pinewood, that we didn't use all that money. So that went back to the taxpayers, so that reduces our levy for the year, because we can't have too much in that fund balance. So the bond payment's coming now. It's about $3.6 million. So our fund balance will be about $800,000, which is probably a more reasonable fund balance amount moving forward. Any questions on that? Internal service fund is our self-insurance fund for dental insurance. So the revenue coming in is money for premiums, whether they're employee or employer contributions for the debt, or the dental insurance plan. And the expenditures going out is the admin fee and the claims going out to pay the dental bills. So we will see a little bit of increase in our fund balance. In here, we're including an estimated 3% increase in our dental premiums. That'll be decided in, at probably August of what that will be, and working with the insurance committee to, to make sure we have a fund balance plan in place. We're still looking at a draft to see what, we should have something formal to look at. You know, if we get to a good point, do we look at increasing benefits for employees? For example, right now, we have $1,000 out of pocket that we do, I think, for everything. So should that be maybe $1,500? Because that $1,000 can be eaten up pretty fast. So that's that fund. And our last fund is our other post-employment trust fund. So in here, we have to recognize all the retiree obligations, whether we're using them to pay out of this fund or not. That's a GASB standard that we have to follow. So this recognizes all the contributions, including the implicit rate, where everybody on our plan, the revenue of the premiums going in there, plus these implicit rates in there, and then the expenditures coming out. So that 158 is just the true spending of the trust that we're using with the non-sunset retirement clauses. And the implicit rate, I don't think I've talked about that before. That's kind of the rate that is estimated, because people that are, you know, 60 or 65, they're on our plan and they're, they get the same rate as a healthy 22-year-old. And if they are out on the open market by themselves, they wouldn't have that. They would be rated up higher. So that's the implicit rate of the value of their, of our plan, because somebody older is having the same rate of as a healthy person. So. Any questions on that one?
Yeah, so that is the explanation on, I was comparing year to year. So last year, for reference, this was. So last year, for reference, this was 74,000, but this year it's 158,000. Um, I did have one question on the previous slide, but I didn't want to.
Okay.
If you want to go back to that one, you mentioned, uh, a 3% in cash flow. There was a 12% that was mentioned on like health insurance. Is that 3% inside of that 12, or is it separate?
That's separate.
Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yep. The 12% is only on the health premiums. Yep. And then for the, our OPEB trust and the original budget that was adopted last year, I had, I looked eight retirees estimated, where now we're at 16 to 18, depending on when they fall off.
And that accounts for the change in the number?
So last year in the adopted budget, it was only going down 70,000.
Right. Yeah, last year that 158 was 74,000. So when I looked at it, I was like, why was there a jump of double? Because the, the revenue was lower, but the expenditures were higher on that one. So that's what I was trying to make sense of that, so.
So that's all the budget numbers, and then some over, I think, three presentations. So, uh, asking for approval on our budget for the 23-24 school year.
This is an action item, um, one of the primary responsibilities of the board, pass the budget for the next year. Do we have a motion?
It's all moved.
Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root, uh, to approve the budget as presented by Ms. Tina Burkholder. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 4-0. You have a budget, Tina. Thank you. Moving on to Item C, Superintendent Contract Addendum for 2023-2024. Superintendent Contract is a statutory requirement for the board. We are beginning the third year of Superintendent Olson's three-year contract on July the 1st of 2023, and that triggers a provision within his contract to review his compensation at this point in time. Over, uh, a number of weeks and months, we have explored our superintendent current, uh, compensation package. We did have two meetings that were open to the public, uh, work sessions where we discussed the information that we researched and, uh, were provided with both from the Minnesota School Boards Association, as well as research that included doing comparable contracts from 10 different school districts of similar size throughout the state of Minnesota. Pursuant to those discussions, we also, um, consulted with Human Resources and with our district attorney, um, as to guidance to how to proceed in the language, uh, for that, for a potential addendum to the contract. What we discovered was that we are not simply at the bottom of the income levels. We are actually substantially below market value on our superintendent contract. One of the secondary things we discovered is that Superintendent Olson has not had an increase or an adjustment at all to his compensation since 2020, which means he's essentially had a frozen salary for three years in a row. So pursuant to that situation, we evaluated a number of options, um, to increase his salary, which is included in the contract addendum. The second issue that we addressed is a vehicle allowance. Um, this was removed approximately five to six years ago from the superintendent's contract, uh, prior to Superintendent Olson because of, um, some severe economic conditions within the district, and we wanted to look at bringing that back as a benefit for our superintendent. Um, we explored that. We looked at comparable superintendent contracts for vehicle allowance in other districts. We also looked at what Superintendent Olson was claiming on his, um, mileage reimbursement, which was essentially nothing. He has not been claiming very much at all, um, over the last couple of years. So we made, uh, made a decision to bring that, uh, question to our attorney to see if that was something that we could bring back. And so within that contract addition is an adjustment to Superintendent Olson's year three, 2023-2024 salary, as well as a vehicle allowance, which if one were to do the math, equates to approximately 460 miles per month. And I know even just as of today, you, uh, had over 100 miles today that you put on in service to the district. Is that correct for, for today? So I don't think it takes long to reach 460 miles per month when we consider that we have approximately five buildings, three different sites outside of our district, plus, uh, the Special Education Cooperative, the nature-based program, and then consulting and attending other meetings outside the district. Our attorney felt that 460 miles per month was probably, uh, a little on the lean side, but that's where we decided to leave this, um, for year three. So for year three, we have an addendum to the superintendent contract. That is an action item. Members, um, including the members that are absent tonight, also participated in those work sessions, received the addendum suggestion from our attorney, and we're going to bring this forth for a vote prior to the July 1st, uh, provision within the contract. So do I have a motion to bring?
It's all moved.
And I have a motion from, uh, Melissa Curtis to bring the Superintendent Contract Addendum as written to the board and seconded by Jeff Hegley. All those in favor, please, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes 4-0. And is there any additional discussion from the rest of the board? Okay. Thank you. Oh, Casey.
I just want to say that there was a, a lot of work behind looking at all the other districts. Um, on there, there was the public, or the, uh, the open meetings as well that went through everything.
Mm-hmm.
It was a full board discussion.
Twice.
Twice.
Twice, yeah.
So it wasn't a, you know, quick decision.
And there is a lot, um, we put a lot of formulas in place as to how we arrived at the numbers that we did, and, um, I, I think that's easily, um, explainable to anybody that has any further questions. So, so moving on to Item D, this would be four, first reading of policy and handbooks for review, um, as well as three handbooks and a dozen or more policies. All of these are at first reading, so these are not action items for tonight. They're just reviews. Superintendent Olson is going to take us through that process.
All right. Thank you. Um, first reading of, uh, handbooks here. Our, um, policy committee has met with our principals the last, uh, two policy meetings, um, and, uh, really dove in deep, uh, with, uh, HR Director, Barb Wilson, and we are, um, looking at, um, you know, bringing these forward here. They're getting to a good point. There's always work to do, and I know that, um, recently, um, Kathy and Barb were on a MSBA, um, uh, meeting that Terry Morrow, the legal counsel for MSBA has, um, is, is going to share a, um, a, um, a MSBA policy guide for handbooks, and Clay Swatsky's working on getting that for us, so that'll be nice to have. But, um, these handbooks are getting to a good spot. They love the unification. Our principals have done a lot of work. They do a lot of work early on this now, and that's, uh, really helpful so that we can continue to make them better. Um, Dr. Wilson has also done the employee handbook and continued to make that, uh, better during her tenure here. Um, so we, we bring these forward, um, A, B, C, and D to first reading, and now I'll, I'll jump into some policy, um, as well. Uh, Policy 601 is the school district curriculum and instruction goals, and what this one does is, um, the update adds some definitions, some updates of the World's Best Workforce Plan, and then deletes some obsolete provisions with reading. Um, 602, um, the organization of the school calendar and school day, um, adds the e-learning provisions into that section. Uh, Policy 618, assessment of standard achievement. MS, um, is, uh, uh, let's see here, that's just, uh, some small, um, updates with definitions. Um, Policy 619, um, staff development for standards, uh, very little changed on that one. Policy 620, credit for learning. Um, on that one, um, it removes, um, online learning, um, and updates definitions and adds, uh, healthcare, uh, credit, um, from, um, MSBA's, uh, work. And then Policy 606, core instruction policy, um, there's a few, um, updated revisions. Um, Policy 501, school weapons policy. Um, this one, um, we brought forward as a, a school district just to have some more specific language and clarity around the, uh, policy. Feel that that, um, does that now. Um, Policy 517, student recruiting, um, very little, um, was changed, um, from MSBA, so, um, some of these are pretty straightforward, um, MSBA, um, changes with very little changing. Um, Policy 525, violence prevention, uh, once again, very little has changed in there, but, um, updates are always important. Policy 527, student use in parking changed. Policy 528, student parental, uh, parental, family, and marital nondiscrimination, changed with that one, but, um, another one that's important to keep, uh, moving forward with all changes. Notification of staff regarding placement of students with violent behavior, um, important, um, policy, but, um, just some, uh, definition changes and, um, small changes from MSBA. And Policy 624 is actually a new policy to, identifies itself more as that online instruction, um, policy from MSBA. So it was, um, uh, a, a new policy for us here. And those are policies that we're bringing forward here tonight. That was a lot of work from the policy committee, so, um, I know that you guys have been putting in extra, extra, extra long hours, so, uh, we appreciate that through the guidance of, uh, Barb Wilson and Clay Swatsky. Appreciate the, all the work that you guys have done.
And to just, uh, make it clear for anyone who happens to be clicking on all of these links that are embedded in our agenda, there are the same policy as listed twice where it says MSBA. That is the recommended policy or the model policy for MSBA, and then the first one is the one that is our current policy. Hopefully by the time we bring these to second read, we'll only have one version. We will have merged, uh, the recommendations for the red line changes with our current policy and made adjustments to those. So I think that's a little unclear sometimes to the public, so I just wanted to make that, uh, comment that that's why the policies are listed twice in the agenda. Any further discussion on the policies tonight? And we will continue to work through the summer diligently, the policy committee. We have a lot of new policies, um, and policies that need updated because of the, um, the outcome of the legislative session this time. So that'll be a busy summer for the rest of us, so. So now we've come to, uh, item number nine, and we need a motion to adjourn.
It's all moved.
Second.
I'm Melissa Curtis to adjourn. Second, Casey Root. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Motion passes 4-0, and we are adjourned at 8:01. Thank you very much, everyone.